Okay, I was waiting for all of the reminders that we were recording. I will welcome everyone and call this March 14th, 2022 meeting of the Lafayette City Council, excuse me, to order and will by a roll call announce that all of the council members are present. And we'll move on to agenda item three, which is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Andori and a second by Councilmember Dawson. I will start with council member, do a roll call vote. Councilmember, actually, Mala, I don't think we do this, but do we, should we be doing public comment on the agenda?
Really up to the pleasure of the mayor if you'd like to. I mean, it is just form, many, many councils don't even have adoption of the agenda. It's a place to functionally add an item that's late breaking.
Okay.
So it's really your pleasure, your free late comment if you want, but also not necessary.
Okay, I think I'll stick with our past practice and we can consider that in the adoption of our handbook and policies. So I will conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Quat.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andori.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we have our agenda adopted. And we will move on to item number four, which is public comments. And this item, this part of the agenda is for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. You will have opportunity at each item where appropriate, we will ask you to provide public comment on those agenda items. So if you would like to speak to us and I'm not on the agenda, I will turn it over to Suzanne to invite you in.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public speaker for non-agendized items is Lauren Herpik. If anyone else would like to speak now, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom.
Hi, City Council.
Welcome, Ms. Herpik. Yeah, welcome.
Hi, Mayor Garringer. So Lauren Herpik, 332 Maraga Boulevard. Just a quick question on the noise ordinance. I know that City Council back in, I believe, 2018, could be 2017, put on or discussed the potential of changing the noise ordinance, especially for residential neighborhoods. And I wanted to see when that would potentially get on the City Council's agenda, if it's waiting for GPAC sort of review, or if it can be, if it can go right through City Council. So I wanted to throw that out there, see if we can follow up and make good on a decision made years ago.
Okay, thank you. And we will, staff has just heard you, and this is a good opportunity to remind members of the public that these are items that we can hear from you, take, you know, new information, but we cannot act on them. So after we're done with public comment, I'll see if staff has a quick update. And if not, we have heard you and we will get, look into that. Thank you.
There are four additional speakers for this item. The next speaker is LC, followed by Annie Wright, Erica Fraga, and Cassidy.
And welcome, LC.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. I was, yes, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me, allowing me to speak tonight. And I wanted to speak about the current CCAAS, Contra Costa Animal Services, drafted agreement between the city and the county animal services. This has been sent to the 18 cities for review. The agreement is below the basic standard of care by shelters across our state, and many of them serving much smaller populations with a fraction of the CCAAS budget. In September of 2020, the director informed all 18 cities that they would be removing services due to budgetary issues. And some of these services were, the number of officers allowed for field services that decreased from 16 to 10, and the field services reduced its operating hours. The on-call coverage was eliminated. They decreased the wild animal retrieval on private property with stock. All live wildlife calls were referred to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. However, they are unable to take these calls due to having four officers in four counties. They also eliminated the transfer of injured wildlife to Lindsay Wildlife Hospital. So this agreement calls for a $1 million additional funding for their budget for this fiscal year. And next year will be an additional $2 million. That's already on top of the $6 million they received from the cities. Currently, the CCAAS has a $12 million budget. In spite of these additional increases that they're asking the cities to pay, these services will not be reinstated as promised, the services that were removed in 2020. CCAAS presented to the Contra Costa County Public Protection Committee the annual amount that they would be contributing to their revenue. That amount, based off this new agreement, will stay the same every year annually, while the cities' fees will continue to increase based off of the proposed budget. I agree that CCAAS needs more services. However, this agreement does not outline these new services. So in conclusion, I am asking the city not to agree to this, to consent to this agreement, and go back to the table and rethink and bring the cities involved and how this is affecting all of the cities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and for timing your public comments perfectly. And I know that we have received also written communications. And so thank you for coming again today. And.
The next public speaker is Annie Wright, followed by Erica Fraga, Cassidy, and Lisa Fulton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm a lifelong Contra Costa County resident, animal lover, and rescue volunteer for over 20 years. I humanely trap community cats that have been abandoned in neighborhoods and throughout our communities. We rely on rescue groups to help control the cat population. I also help with fostering and taming the kittens to maybe shy. We find them homes. And the problem now is there just aren't enough services, not only with Contra Costa Animal Services, but the rescue groups who have been relied on for so many years, they're just maxed out. So there's a lot of times, there's nowhere for all of these kittens to go. And then they're trying to catch up now because of the lot of the closures that happened before COVID and, you know, before COVID and then during COVID. So we've lost a lot of resources and rescue groups that used to participate with the shelter. So I've actually, I have seen this new agreement between the 18 contracted cities. I'm very concerned that our owned animals and our wildlife, they're in jeopardy, and so are our communities right now. I think it's very inequitable to the cities, its citizens, and our wildlife and our animals. The scope does not outline services, leaving cities vulnerable and responsible for services. The field response time is so inadequate, it can be between 12 to 24 hours. So that means a stray dog at large could be running into traffic. It could injure itself or harm other animals and people. And then there's, of course, the wildlife that are injured that are just left out on the road with no help. I've witnessed the suffering of these animals. And it's just horrific. It's inexcusable. I think that this agreement can be the catalyst for real change. Many people like myself have tried for years to get animal services to improve their services and help our communities. Many of our outlying, you know, counties and cities, not the counties, but the cities are underserved. They're struggling to pay bills. And we, you know, we need these free services. And even people with money would like a little help too with these services. So I ask you to please look at this agreement, consider what programs we need to, for the safety of our animals and our populations. I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. And are there any clarifying questions from my colleagues? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you. And we'll go on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Erica Fraga, followed by Cassidy and Lisa Fulton. If anyone else would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please use the raise hand feature now.
Thank you, Lafayette City Council and staff for taking my call tonight. I very quickly came for the right party. My name is Erica Fraga, and I'm a taxpaying citizen in Contra Costa County. I'm going to speak tonight about the rise in canine distemper, which is an often fatal viral disease that is highly contagious among some mammals. Additionally, it appears to be spreading at a high rate within our wildlife population, which in turn threatens to infect our domestic dog population. As a dog guardian myself, all my animals receive their distemper, hepatitis, parainfluenza, paravirus, and rabies vaccines when scheduled to protect them and the other dogs they play and interact with. However, not everyone has the transportation or financial means to keep current with their pets' medical appointments, much less our own. Canine distemper can be prevented or greatly reduced with a simple vaccine, and veterinarians are all urging dog owners to make sure their pets are up to date on their shots. Until recently, Contra Costa Animal Services had closed its low-cost public spay and neuter and vaccine clinic, putting the full brunt of that service on the very few nonprofit rescues or the average citizen. However, these are taxpayer-funded services. They've just reopened now, but only up to four owned animals per day on select days of the week. In the meantime, it seems that Contra Costa Animal Services has been planning on each city in Contra Costa County to pay extra and per capita city fees to offset the cost of the taxpayer-funded services that they are required to provide, but have not been doing. I asked the City Council to not sign any contract provided by Contra Costa Animal Services until they're able to meet the needs of the taxpaying citizens with the allotted monies for these services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, so thank you for coming, and we will move to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Cassidy, followed by Lisa Fulton. And there are currently no other hands raised after Lisa.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome, Cassidy.
Hi there. Thanks so much for allowing me to speak. I will readily admit that I am not a resident of Contra Costa County, right next door in Alameda. I moved to the East Bay in 1996, and I started volunteering at Lindsay Wildlife Museum, now Lindsay Wildlife Experience, right away. When Lindsay started its wildlife rehabilitation internship program, I was one of the two people lucky enough to get that opportunity. Some days were really heartbreaking. And one of the best things about spending so much time at the wildlife hospital was interacting with just hundreds and hundreds of caring individuals in your community, my community. Just countless people came in carrying mystery boxes, you know, full of baby raccoons that they had found crying by the side of the road, or tiny squirrels whose nests came down in the high winds. Children arrived cradling tiny hummingbird nests in their hands. And our most frequent rescuers were animal control officers. We knew them, we knew them by name. I've since moved on and become a veterinary nurse, and I work, I work with them. Less with wildlife, although, although I make frequent trips there because everyone knows that I'm willing to take anything, anywhere. It is, I was so distressed to find out that, that the services, that, that the, that the, sorry, Contra Costa Animal Services had, had cut the positions and the, and the funding for the ability for people to respond to injured animals. And I was sent a couple of threads from next door about really kind of horrific incidents with deer by the side of the road and Good Samaritans stopping and calling, you know, just calling the city police and then calling Contra Costa and calling Lindsay and calling California Wildlife Services. And there's nobody there, no one there to help. And one woman had to drive away her three children, all under, no, I don't, I don't know if it was three, all under 10 years old, just leaving an animal struggling and suffering by the side of the road. In another case, many people came together to try to save, save a doe. It was more than 12 hours before she, before she passed away. They returned the next day and found two little fawns. They tried to catch them to bring them to Lindsay, and they, they never did. I, I understand that times are tough and money is tight, but Contra Costa Animal Services is well-funded. They're well-funded by you, by the cities that contract with them. This is, this is, this is not a frill. Sorry, you know, this is not a, I'm sorry, I, I just think that their refusal to care for these gravely injured animals sends a message to the community that individual lives are worthless and that wild animals are disposable. And it shows our children that nobody cares when animals suffer. I'm sorry for taking too much time.
No, thank you. Thank you for coming. And thank you for sharing your comments. And thank you for the work that you do. And are there any questions from my colleagues? Okay, thank you again, Cassidy, for coming. And we will move to the next speaker. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Fulton, followed by Jamie Kronk.
Welcome. It looks like you just put yourself on mute, Lisa.
Oh, unmute, okay.
There you go.
Okay, all right here. Hi there. I'm Lisa Fulton. I've been involved with the cat rescue, in particular trapping cats and getting them spayed and neutered. I'm concerned about this proposed agreement because it doesn't reinstate desperately needed programs, in particular spay-neuter services. This agreement really is a bad deal, and the city shouldn't accept it. And so I implore you to not sign it until you've examined it or, you know, met, met with us, and we could, you know, come to the table and explain what we expect as residents and taxpayers in Contra Costa County. Let me just tell you a little bit about my personal experiences in the poor neighborhoods in Contra Costa. I, for the last five years, I've been heavily involved in the trapping in the Bayview neighborhood of San Pablo alone, which means by myself. I've trapped over 100 cats in a neighborhood that spans about four blocks. All of these cats are not feral cats. They're not wild cats. They are the offspring of pets who have been abandoned or have not been fixed. And there are various reasons for people not fixing their animals. One, they may not know that this service is available. They may just not be aware of it. The other reason is they may not be able to afford it. Another reason is that Bayview community is really far away from Martinez. So what we really need to do here is to ramp up spay-neuter surgeries because there is a population explosion of community cats out there. And we're getting behind the curve. And I'm seeing in this neighborhood where I've trapped over 100 cats, I'm seeing new cats. And I'm like, oh no, there's a litter that we missed somewhere. So I, I invite anybody to come out and see my neighborhoods and watch all these cats. All you have to do is walk two blocks and you'll find more cats. And I used to live in Walnut Creek. I lived there for 10 years. And, you know, just to be honest with everybody, is in the more affluent neighborhoods, you don't walk two blocks and see a bunch of cats begging for food. This happens in other neighborhoods that are underserved, that are lower income, and it's really heartbreaking. And it's, so this agreement really isn't equitable amongst all of the communities, amongst all of the cities. There are cities that need more. And since this agreement will, thank you. It's not one size fits all. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much for coming. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again for coming. And Suzanne, do we have more? We have one more speaker, I believe, on.
Yes, the next speaker is Jamie Kronk. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, wait. Hi.
And now we can see you.
Okay. Hi. So, yeah, I just was calling about the same issue with the, with the animals and CCAAS. About six years ago, I started getting involved with helping with mostly cats and kittens in the communities. And I've become more and more involved and realize the extent of, of the issues and the problems throughout the different cities in our county. And I recently became a member with an organization in this county that helps, you know, trap stray cats, does spay and neuter and, and, you know, fostering and trying to adopt out animals that have been neglected or abandoned or, you know, colonies because there's not enough services to spay and neuter all of the cats. And so I just have been learning about this new contract. And it just seems like there's a lot of important information missing. It doesn't seem to really address the issues that are in the county and the, in the cities. And I really think the problem has gotten worse with the animals, especially, specifically cats is what I'm most familiar with. You know, during COVID, the services were so cut back that this is a time where we need to have some kind of contract with CCAAS that specifically addresses these issues and is not vague. And I, I think that somehow we need to, I mean, I urge the, the city of Lafayette, because I am, I am a resident of Lafayette, to not sign this contract and, you know, possibly listen to other, you know, look at the different perspectives and talk to other city managers about really what is the best situation or solution and contract and services for our animal problem. And the other thing I wanted to just talk about was, I mean, I'm in Lafayette, near the hills where there's a lot of deer. I mean, in fact, today I saw four next to the freeway. And, you know, I, I mean, I do believe that we've kind of encroached upon wildlife because of, you know, different, because we live here and this was originally their home. And, I mean, I love that I live in a place where there are deer, but I, I just, you know, think it's really important to take care of our wildlife the best that we can. And when I saw those four today, it just, you know, breaks my heart because I, I'm aware in the past what has been happening with some of the injured wildlife and them not being taken care of. And I just,
You're probably just, if you wrap up, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so I just support everyone else that's come and talked about this. I think it's a really, really important issue and needs to be looked at closer and with more guidance from outside people.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or, okay, thank you very much for coming and speaking to us. Any other public speakers, Suzanne?
No, Mayor, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, so we will bring that back. And I don't know if we, if we have a quick answer on the, when the noise ordinance will be coming back.
Thank you, Mayor. I did check with our planning director, and the noise ordinance update is not one of the 16 projects in the current fiscal year's work plan. And you will be reviewing the new work plan in May. That would be the time to consider whether or not to add it to the planning department work plan. It's just that we've had a series of new housing laws and the general plan update that have taken precedence over some of the tasks that we have wanted to do.
Great, thank you. And do you want to speak briefly to the items about animal control? I know that we did receive a written, thank you.
All, all cities in Contra Costa County have received a draft agreement from the animal services offices. And actually, the chief and I are scheduled to meet with the director in either next week or the week after, just to go over what the contract is and to ask questions. Additionally, animal services is meeting with all the Contra Costa police chiefs, as well as with the Contra Costa Public Managers Association. And once we have had all our questions answered, then I will, the chief and I will return to you with the agreement and our recommendations.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank again all of the public speakers who came today. And we will move on to our next item, which is agenda item, and thank you, Naru. Sorry if I didn't say that. But we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is presentations, and very exciting. We have two introduction of new employees. And I'm going to first turn it over to Tracy Robinson and let her introduce.
Okay. Actually, TJ, can you raise your hand so that?
He's already over here.
There you are.
Yeah.
So Mayor Garringer and members of the council and the community, I'd like to introduce TJ Meyersick. TJ Meyersick is our new assistant recreation coordinator. And TJ is a very local. He grew up in Lafayette. He lives right across from the community center, so that commute is great for him. He went to Burton Valley Stanley, Campolindo. He graduated from Sacramento State with a degree in sociology. He was a swim coach, and after college, he coached football at Campolindo. And TJ says that he really enjoys working with kids, and it's very extremely rewarding for him to work in his own community. And so, welcome TJ. We're really happy to have you on board.
Thank you.
Lots of applause if we were in person. So TJ, do you want, we'll put you on the spot. Do you want to say something?
No, I'm just very happy to be a part of this team. I'm really enjoying my time. It's been great down there at the community center. It's just a lot of fun growing up there and doing a lot of stuff in that area, and now being able to be a part of it and helping the kids of this community now.
Great. Well, welcome, welcome back, welcome home. But anyway, very excited to have you on the team. And I know they're excited to have you over at the Parks and Recs Department, so welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
And the next we will move is to, that item B of that is to turn it over to Chief Ben Aldrich.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I was going to be introducing you to two individuals. Our future third sergeant, Amanda Sears, is working tonight at one of our other station houses. And it's been quite the night for her because there was no way to jump on our Zoom tonight. So I will be introducing to her to you shortly. But I'm excited to introduce you to Roderick Smalley tonight. He's our newest officer here at Lafayette PD. So I'll tell you a little bit about Roderick. Roderick has been with the sheriff's office for about three years. Prior to that, he spent five years with the Contra Costa County Juvenile Probation Department, where his spouse still works. uh where his spouse still works. Um, when I interviewed to bring him down here, uh the, first off, when he went through training in patrol, he did do a segment in Lafayette and we loved him right off the bat. So he was working with Officer Gillette and we knew early on that we would try to recruit him back to us. Uh, and when I interviewed with him and his experience in juvenile probation, uh, the thing that really stood out is his desire to work with our youth into the future. Some of our youth programs, you know, recess with a cop got put on hold with COVID. Uh, but we're looking to bring those back here uh very, very soon and having Roderick, who's got the juvenile probation background, working with young kids who may be struggling with different issues and having a vested interest in kids. Uh, we're really excited to bring him on uh in his time with the sheriff's office. He's been assigned to the jail and to the Contra Costa Regional Medical Center and came out to patrol. And then uh, once he was off uh his patrol training, uh about six months later, we had the opportunity to have an opening and select Roderick. Uh, so him and his wife, uh, they have a two and a half year old son. And about a month ago, I learned something very unique about Roderick. Um, he may look small in the camera, but he's about as wide as he is tall, a weightlifter. But he is a great pastry chef. Uh, he makes birthday cakes and a variety of other things and is currently working on a uh cookbook. Uh, he also likes cooking meats and other things. And uh, in fact, I think he's putting on a little birthday party for one of his partners here this Wednesday. He called to make sure I'd be working. I said, well, now I am for sure. So maybe Joanne won't have to order cakes from other uh other vendors in the future. Maybe Roderick can uh make them. But I will tell you, the cake that he made for Sharon Lloyd was fantastic. So we want to welcome Roderick and really excited to have him. He uh has a big smile, uh has a quiet voice, uh provides great service and exactly what we want here in Lafayette. So I'm very welcome or happy to welcome on board. So Roderick, if you want to say a few words.
And you, Chief. Hello, everybody. Hello, Mayor. Um, this is my first time meeting a mayor, so this is a pleasure. It's very nice to meet you. Um, yeah, um, I think the, one of the big things about me is uh, like Chief said, I, I do really enjoy working with juveniles and young adults. I actually worked at a group home for a few years before I even worked for the probation department. So um uh, you know, I, I feel like I connect with the kids and I'm able to get through to them. Um, uh, on a couple of different calls so far, I've been able to talk to a couple, one at uh, one at Stanley and another at um Akalani's. So um I will be reaching out with, to TJ now that um I had a chance to hear him talk and know that he's at the rec, at the rec center. So um I'm gonna use that as one of my tools. So I'll try to track him down, but um, I really appreciate um everybody allowing me to work in Lafayette. Lafayette's been good to me so far. Everybody's really nice. So I'm looking forward to the next few years being here. If anybody has any, any runs into any, any problems with any children or at the high school that they want me to talk to, feel free to reach out to the chief or anybody. Um, uh, one of the things I told the chief in my interview was that I don't mind going down um in my, my spare time uh um when I'm on duty, going down just to talk to anybody. They might not be in trouble, but they might need just a friend or somebody to talk to because um I've already can tell that uh a lot of kids at the high school are going through a lot and, you know, um, people don't even know about it.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think you've won everyone over. Um, I want to say that um thank you for wanting to work here. Um, and, and particularly, um, we're gonna have to talk offline if Ben will let me come. Actually, you're gonna have a whole bunch of people at the police station on Wednesday for that birthday party. Um, but um all of us, you know, have a passion for our um students and for the safety of everyone in the community. But definitely, um, as a former school board member, I know that um the, both superintendents, I'm sure Ben will set it up so that you can meet with them as, you know, programs are opening up. And so um just welcome to the community and look forward to seeing you around. And um I want to find out about baking cakes and sourdough bread and um I love cheesecake. Putting in the um future request. No, just kidding. But welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ben. Great introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, we will move on. Always fun to start with the, with all of the, the fun and welcoming new people. And hopefully we're doing that at almost every meeting over the next several months. You see lots of nodding of heads there. So we'll move on to agenda item number six, the consent calendar. Uh, before we ask for a motion, does anyone have anything they want to pull or any comments that they want to make? Okay, and Suzanne, I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public who have a comment or would like to have us pull an item on the consent calendar to consider um later on in the agenda.
Mayor, there are currently no hands raised, but if any member of the public would like to uh speak on an agenda uh consent item, uh please use the raise hand feature now. There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Andori?
Uh, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Thank you. And council members. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Andori and a second by Councilmember Quoc. I'll conduct the roll call vote. Councilmember Candell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Andori?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So our consent calendar is unanimously approved. And um we will now move on to agenda item number seven. And I love this flow that is going on. I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, but there, the people are moving over into the main meeting um very smoothly. So thank you, Suzanne, for that. Um, we'll move on to agenda item A, which is our ARPA Subcommittee um recommendation and up, update and funding recommendations. And so I will turn this over to Thomas, I think. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you too. Good to see you all. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to uh see if I can share my screen. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Thomas Myers, Economic Development Manager for the City of Lafayette. Uh, tonight, item seven A is the ARPA Subcommittee update and funding recommendations. Um, want to briefly go through some of the recommendations that are in your council item. The, the main recommenda, the main change to the existing allocations from the Department of Treasury. Uh, their final rule, which is effective on April 1st, will allow cities that receive less than $10 million um to move their losses over to the general fund. And this standard allowance, the allowance that they're allowing us make that allows us to do this, we can use the ARPA funds for general government services. Uh, the council at its discretion can transfer up to the maximum amount of funds that we receive from ARPA, both in July of last year and our upcoming allocation in July of uh 2022. So that's a, that's a discretionary decision for council to make. Um, but allowing us to move these funds to uh the general fund will allow us to spend ARPA funds on projects for both economic recovery and for general government activities. Uh, tonight, the Subcommittee is recommending
So Thomas.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't know if your slides are supposed to be moving forward, but we're still on the intro slide.
Um.
And if that's where you intend to be, I apologize for
No, mine are, mine are moving forward.
So they aren't here.
Hmm.
And it's not, it doesn't look like
Thomas, it looks like it can just scroll down.
Yeah.
On our screen, it looks like you can scroll down on our screen and it'd work.
The kids is moving, but.
Yeah, we're seeing your, your PDF file.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, for some reason it jumped to stop sharing. I don't know why. But uh, so this is the slide, this is the slide I just went through about the changes in the uh the, the final rule from the Department of Treasury, uh, which once again allows us to at, at council's discretion to move all of our um losses from from previous, from the uh, allows us to move our ARPA funds into the general fund. Um, so tonight's Subcommittee recommendations are in, in alignment with the uh change in the final rule is after April 1st, we want to transfer $500,000 from the unallocated ARPA funds back to the general fund to reimburse uh for our lost revenue and to backfill the funds that were previously allocated for the park theater. Um, we also want to immediately allocate $350,000 from the general fund to the Chamber of Commerce. And then once again, after April 1st, transfer $350,000 from, again, for the previously unallocated ARPA funds for the Chamber of Commerce, for the Chamber of Commerce, back to the general fund. Once again, as reimbursement for lost revenue. And again, after April 1st, transfer $100,000 from unallocated ARPA funds for the Business District Marketing Program back to the general fund, also as a reimbursement for lost revenue. In addition, tonight, we're recommending an additional allocation of $56,500 of ARPA funds for LPI, the Lafayette Partners in Education for Wellness Programs at other schools in the AAU HSD system. And this allocation fulfills the council's intent to support mental health needs for our school-aged Lafayette residents. Also, we are recommending with respect to the Business Assistant Program that's being run by Townsend Public Affairs, we're recommending that we suspend this program effective April 1st, given that most of the state and federal funds for business assistance that have been previously allocated have already been dispersed. We want to keep uh towns in, in touch with the city uh in case there are new state funds or federal funds for business assistance that come along. And we'll reevaluate uh the use of towns and for that purpose, when those, when and if those funds are uh set up again by either the state or the federal government. But in the meantime, Townsend will continue to assist the Lafayette businesses that are currently in the Business Assistance Program. And that pretty much does it. Uh, if you've got any questions, I'm here to answer any of those and uh apologize for the frozen screen and I will stop sharing the screen at this point.
It's fine. It, it all, it all worked out and lots of, lots of help to get, or advice to get it going. So um, are there any questions from my colleagues for the committee or for Thomas, uh Councilmember Candell?
Great. Thank you for the report. So that's, I mean, in one said, you know, good news that we're more flexible. Um, my question is, is this um easier on us? I mean, like I, I, or do we know why they made that change? Because, because now it seems like all the funds will go into our general fund and then straight out. So we're doing all the bookkeeping instead of the ARPA committee. And that, that probably seems like it's better for them, right? And it's probably better for all of us instead of having us keep track and them keep track. So I'm just kind of wondering why they did it and and if it's good for us, it's easier for us or, or not.
Well, I'll, I'll let Tracy step in at some point also, but uh I also want to say that it's, it'll be, number one, it'll be easier for the city to allocate funds. And I think what the Department of Treasury is looking to do is smaller cities such as Lafayette and those cities that got, that didn't get as much money as the larger cities, uh will be able to move the money to general funds just as a, just as a general practice so that the reporting requirements won't be as stringent as those other cities that will, that have more, that have more funds. We will still have to make reports to the Department of Treasury as to what we did with the money and how it was used. And so far, we've been consistent in terms of following the program and being consistent with the intent of the ARPA funds for economic recovery.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Andori?
Um, Thomas, do you want to report on the, the fifth recommendation, the outdoor dining? And the, the one year period?
Sure. Um, just one second.
Well, we're waiting for Thomas. I just want to add, this also uh makes it easier for our sub recipients and they're reporting back to us. So that's a benefit as well.
You know what, Thomas, I'll just jump in real quick because I have it right here. So basically there is a fifth recommendation. I apologize. It wasn't in the PowerPoint. But basically, in order to um extend the outdoor dining program, um, we would like to ex, to initiate a, a one-year pilot program that would extend the outdoor dining arrangements until March 31st, 2023. So that would include allowing restaurants to use on-street parking and private parking lots and sidewalks for dining and retail use. Um, and that is, of course, as long as we maintain the adequate space for pedestrian travel. So in order to do that, uh, we recommend that we uh, the current relaxations of the sign and pork parking ordinances to allow A-frames and banners um and for all those things uh be extended until March 31st, 2023. Um, there is likely some additional council action that will need to take place in terms of, Molly can correct me, there are some resolutions and things that we need to pass in order to make that happen. But at this point tonight, we are just seeking the council's uh approval that we go forward with the pilot program and prepare the proper resolution so that we can continue the program through 2023.
Okay, so any other questions from council members before we go to public comment? Okay, I see shaking of heads. Great job on the, on the report. Um, now, so Suzanne, would you please assist with um bringing members of the public in for public comment?
Certainly. Uh, the first uh person to provide public comment is Grace Dixon. If anyone else would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Great. So welcome.
Thank you. Happy, happy Pi Day to you all.
Yes.
Uh, I, hopefully you did uh get my letter and my presentation. So thank you. Thank you for considering my request to consider ways of park projects in the next dispersment of the ARPA funds. These are my opinions as a private Lafayette citizen. Uh, my approach may be very humble and out of the box. Uh, but I'm taking a realistic view of our limited budget and our limited staffing, our ongoing openings, our increasing land values and competition with housing needs. I've also taken a, a hard look at our past and present history of our parks projects. Our five years uh just to replace the play equipment at Brook Street Park, and that is no fault of staff. Um, it is just a, the way the world is these days. But uh our downtown families were years without a park, a playful park within walking distance. Um, so, and then nine years and counting on Lafayette's first attempt to add play elements in a neighborhood park, any neighborhood park. And then 10 years after the DSP was published, we still don't have any of those properties. And in fact, we've lost library park for good uh to, to housing. So if we take just a few humble steps with the assistance of ARPA funds, we can make walkable parks a reality in this decade. And I think that would be a tremendous step for Lafayette. Um, additionally, and this is where Pi Day in a radius comes in. Uh, additionally, creating three to six small parks will actually put Lafayette in a good position for three to six one-quarter mile radius opportunities uh for land value recapture. Because if we make uh a public action and we increase the uh land value of the, that one-quarter mile radius around three to six parks, uh, we do have a good opportunity of doing land value recapture there. So three to six parks is far, far better monetarily for Lafayette than is one large park. So thank you. And I'm here for any questions if you have.
Thank you. Any council members have questions for the speaker? So thank you very much for um, for your written communications and then also for coming and speaking as, to us this evening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lauren Herpik. And if And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now, as there are currently no other hands raised.
Hi, City Council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Awesome. Thanks, City Council. I wanted to echo what Grace just discussed and what she has so diligently detailed and planned for all of you in her presentation and proposal. Honestly, I'll be honest, I don't think I've ever met anybody else like Grace Dixon, who has truly put so much time, effort, energy, and just intelligence into connecting the dots and thinking outside the box for, for our city, let other, any other city alone. I do want to echo what she said and support the idea of using, using some of the ARPA funding to support and develop downtown walkable neighborhood parks. I know most of the, all of you were at last week's diversity, equity, inclusion, welcoming Lafayette newcomers, night, evening panel discussion. And there was so much interesting things that were said there. And I think one of the biggest takeaways for me was how do we make people feel more welcome in Lafayette? There were so many great ideas. But one of the biggest things is just creating neighborhood gathering spaces. You know, this is, I moved to Lafayette because I wanted to be able to walk to downtown. We wanted to walk to BART. We love that our son will be able to walk to Lafayette Elementary School and Stanley Middle School. But these neighborhood parks, gathering spaces are where our neighbors get to meet each other. Not everybody has a backyard space to play, nor does every, you don't meet your neighbors just hiding in your backyard. You meet them walking on the trail, walking to a park. I know the discussion for Lee Creek side has gone on for years. And one of my arguments for having a park like Lee and just parks throughout Lafayette in general is that these are creating parks that are inclusive for everybody, inclusive, inclusive for our oldest of neighbors, our youngest of neighbors, neighbors with special needs, neighbors with dogs, neighbors without dogs. But creating places where our community can come together. So I would ask that we use some of the city's tax dollars to really look at how we create welcoming neighborhoods. Again, of most of the housing is going to be coming to downtown Lafayette. Not everyone who already lives here has a backyard. Not everyone wants to drive with the price of gas right now. We don't really want to drive, nor do we want the traffic. And so I think we really should look at how we invest in our parks. We are already behind on our parkland to resident ratio. And I think this is, look, look at the economic benefit that having Lafayette Park Plaza did for sideboard across the street during the pandemic. Think of what you can do with more parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And are there any questions from my colleagues for the speaker? No. So thank you very much for coming forward. And are there any other speakers?
Yes, the next speaker is Cheryl M. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now.
Welcome, Cheryl.
Hi, Mayor and Council staff. I just wanted to speak in support of the sidewalks, the restaurants having the sidewalks, but also to talk about the signs for the small businesses and, and big businesses. In a year's time, I would hope that the council and the staff might consider some of the businesses that are hidden from view, that there'd be better signage for those type businesses that are not really seen straight from the boulevard, but are off. So just a thought that I'm supporting the pilot program. But to think ahead in a year's time, which is like, feels like a skip away that we think about signs for businesses that are just out of sight or hidden around a corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Any questions? You see, nodding, nodding heads of appreciation. So thank you, Cheryl. Are there any additional speakers?
No, Mayor, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and ultimately a vote on the recommendations. Vice Mayor and Dory.
Well, I want to take this opportunity, as I'm sure Councilmember Dawson will also, to thank Thomas for all the work that he's done on this, moving it forward, and really for the work on the gift card program, which went by last week. And I don't, Thomas, do you want to give a brief update on where that stands?
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor. We'd launched the program late last week and we have, we have collected, the, I should actually say, the, the primary purchasers of our gift cards have been Lafayette residents in the 94549 area code. So that's a, so that's good. We have expended approximately a little over $9,000 of our $30,000 allocation for the gift card program. I am carefully monitoring that to make sure that we don't run out of funds for this pilot phase of the program. And I'll be providing an update both to the subcommittee, to, to the subcommittee tomorrow and then keep you informed as to progress of the program. But I think that initial $9,000 and, and, you know, as I'm looking at my other screen, it, you know, the figure changes about every 10, about every 10, 15 minutes, but it is being well received by the public and I'm looking forward to just a discussion tomorrow about where we go forward from there.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor and Dory.
Yeah, I also want to thank Councilmember Dawson, who worked diligently with respect to the allocation, the increased allocation for LPI and mental health support for all Lafayette high school students. I think that's, that's, you know, well done. And with that, I'm going to, I'm going to move approval of the five recommendations in the staff report.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
Great. Any other questions from other council members or are we ready to move forward? Okay, so I will conduct the roll call vote with a motion by Vice Mayor and Dory and a second by Councilmember Dawson. So Councilmember Candell.
Thank you very much and I.
Councilmember Dawson.
Hi.
Councilmember Qua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor and Dory.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so it passes unanimously. And I believe that we can safely say that there's unanimous appreciation for, for the staff, for the consultant, for Naru and for the subcommittee on all of the work that you have done to move this forward. So thank you very much. And we get to look forward to, you know, more updates in, in the future. And so thank you for all the time that you spent on this as well. And we will now move on to Agenda Item 7B under Old Business, which will be for Suzanne Erle, our Communications Analyst, to speak to us about an update on hybrid meeting solutions and returning to in-person meetings. So welcome from behind the curtain and take it away.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Yes, my name's Suzanne Erle and I'm the city's Communications Analyst. And I actually am going to share my screen.
Actually, oh, no, this is fine. It's the wrong item. Sorry to interrupt. Ignore the woman with the gavel.
So as the mayor mentioned, I will be giving you an update on hybrid meeting solutions as well as receiving direction on returning to in-person meetings. And so just as a little bit of background on this item, during the pandemic, the city has been holding public meetings online for the public's health and safety. And in the fall, the council directed staff to look into how we could offer remote participation by the public for certain public meetings. And so we call this hybrid meetings where the members of the public could participate in person or virtually. So tonight, you'll hear an update on where we are with some of those hybrid meeting solutions and give direction to staff regarding returning to in-person meetings. Also, as a little bit of background, the city council, the city of Lafayette is currently utilizing Assembly Bill 361, which allows local governments to hold public meetings in person, online or a hybrid of the both during the pandemic. It allows members of the presiding body, so city council members at a city council meeting, planning commissioners at a planning commission meeting, to also participate remotely from a private location. And that varies from the Brown Act that has some standards regarding if a member of the presiding body is teleconferencing into the meeting. AB 365 also requires that if a meeting is disrupted for technology purposes, that that meeting be continued if the public cannot observe or participate in the meeting. Once AB 365 is no longer in effect, the Brown Act rules will once again apply. In your staff report, there is actually some mention of proposed legislation, which is Assembly Bill 1944, which would potentially modify those Brown Act teleconferencing rules. But since that's just proposed legislation, I'm actually not going to talk anymore about that tonight. But there is some background information in the agenda packet if you are interested. So Contra Costa Health Services does currently strongly recommend that public agencies provide online meetings or teleconferencing. And as recently as March 1st, their most recent recommendations, if the city would like to hold in-person public meetings, they have a series of recommendations that are up on the screen now and will be discussed again. So I won't go over them in detail right now. So where are we for the hybrid meeting solution for the Big Four? Back in September, the city council appropriated $50,000 of ARPA funds towards creating hybrid meeting solutions for the city council and planning commission that meets in the Don Tatsin Community Hall, as well as the Designer Review Commission and TransCirc, which meets in the Arts and Science Discovery Center at the library. So we have been working with a consultant to design and install a hybrid meeting system that would offer real-time remote participation. And actually, I'll clarify in the staff report, I think somewhere it said, a remote participation by attendees and staff. The technology would allow anyone, whether you are a panelist in Zoom, such as council members during a city council meeting, and it would allow anyone to, you know, participate remotely. The technology isn't limited by the role of the person in the meeting. Regarding the community hall specifically, the installation is almost complete. And we have been able to create basically a full hybrid experience. So that means that a remote participant could participate via audio and/or video and/or share their screen and be able to see anything that's presented in, on, on screen in the room. I would also be legible to someone who is participating remotely. The Arts and Science Discovery Center room is a bit more challenging because it had less technology, like no video infrastructure beforehand. And so that design and procurement is still underway. And it may end up being less robust than the community hall, which was true pre-COVID. There was more technology in the community hall than the arts and science room. For the smaller conference rooms and, and meeting rooms at the community center, we have procured some basic video conferencing devices and staff has utilized those for a couple of internal meetings. So those solutions could either be permanently mounted in a room or could be left to be portable and moved from room to room as needed. Definitely, hybrid meetings require more staff time. They require more staff time to set up, to operate and to manage. So in the community hall, an additional person would be required to basically operate the audiovisual and streaming system. So that is a staff person who previously wasn't having to be at a planning commission or city council meeting and take care of those things. Will now need to be at the library and, and running that and the backend of the meeting. In the arts and science room, with a less robust system, we are actually hoping that the staff liaison will be able to simultaneously manage the in-person aspects of the meeting as well as the Zoom teleconferencing and live stream components, but that definitely does add a burden on staff. Additionally, for smaller conference rooms, if we were to hold hybrid meetings there, it would fall on staff to facilitate that. And it may not be efficient for all of our other meetings to, to offer the hybrid option. Also wanted to bring up this evening, basically, the, the risk of technical disruptions during an online or hybrid meeting. Obviously, online and hybrid meetings rely on having power and internet and sometimes even phone connections. And so compared to an in-person, in-room meeting, there are just, just kind of more technical complex things that could go wrong, anything from operator error to software issues or hardware issues. And then, of course, if there was a, a power outage that, that impacted the city hosting that meeting. So those are all things to be aware of. This evening, we would like the council to discuss when and how to return to in-person meetings. Staff does recommend continuing to hold public meetings online while there is a state of emergency still in effect and social distancing is recommended. So tonight, we are seeking your direction on what factors should be considered to determine when to return to in-person meetings, as well as the desired safety protocols for in-person meetings. So to facilitate that conversation, there are a series of questions and a few of them have sub-questions. So I'll go over the questions now and then we can go back through and, and answer them as well. But I'd like to possibly just run through all of them first, just to give you an overview of everything to think about. So question one is what factors does the city council want to consider in determining when to return to in-person meetings? Should the city continue to meet online while it's recommended by the county or the state and while there are distance requirements or recommendations? Once in-person meetings resume, if hybrid meetings are held, should they offer teleconferencing as a courtesy? Or should they rely on AB 361? And are there other factors the city council wants to consider when to return to in-person meetings? Question number two is, are the factors the same for the Big Four as well as the other advisory bodies? The city council would not have to make a blanket decision. We could treat different bodies differently. For that matter, we could even determine if some bodies are utilizing AB 361 to allow everyone, including the members of that body, to continue to meet online. That doesn't have to be the case for other bodies. Obviously, the city will just need to be really clear to the public in agendas and notices on how they can participate in the expectations there. So question three has a couple of sub-questions. So, but question three ultimately is what protocols does the city council desire for in-person meetings? And these are based on the recent recommendations from Contra Costa Health Services. If we are providing social distancing and that can't be achieved in a certain room, should staff evaluate locations other than where a specific group met prior to the pandemic? Number two, should staff develop a written safety protocol that would outline the expectations for public meetings that Lafayette holds? Question number three, for both the city and then other advisory bodies, should the city require versus recommend face masks be worn indoors? If yes, should that requirement be for all attendees or would people self identify that they are up to date on their COVID vaccination and boosters? And also, if yes, since masking sometimes interfere with communications and it can kind of muffle someone's voice when they're speaking into a microphone, would there be an exception for someone who is actively speaking? And what would your expectation be for everyone sitting up at the dais? Sorry, these slides jump ahead very quickly. Continued question number three, sub-question four, should all meeting attendees be asked to self-certify that they're feeling well before entering the meeting room? If so, should this be reminded based on signage that's at or near the entrance? Or would you be looking for some other method for that to take place? And if it's not required of all attendees, would you want staff and, and members of the body that's meeting to self-certify that they are feeling well that day? Number five, should there be a voluntary attendance sheet to collect names to be used for contact tracing? Cities and other public agencies typically Cities and other public agencies typically do not require that someone sign in and give their name to attend a public meeting, so this is a little bit tricky for public agencies. And then another thing to consider is should the city kind of encourage our community members to activate the notify me app, which is the state's contact tracing application on smartphones? Wouldn't be anything that we would interact or have a role with, but it might be a way for someone to understand if they've had an exposure by attending an in-room, in-person meeting. And then finally, at what point would you want these safety protocols to end? Would they be required in perpetuity? Would they end concurrently with the state of emergency ending at the state and county level? So those are all of the things that are up for discussion, and we would love your input on this evening. I know that was a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, and thank you for taking that down so we can see everyone. And a lot of information and and a lot of work that you've been doing, I know, working at getting the rooms set up, so as we go forward and testing different types of tools and equipment. So thank you. Are there any questions for Suzanne? Before we would go to Public Vice Mayor Andori and then Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, Suzanne, thank you for all this work. Just a clarification, you might have said it and I missed, but can we elect to be under 361 for some bodies and not for other bodies?
Yes, you are correct. We understand that you could elect to utilize it for some meetings and not for others. We just need to be clear in the agenda what the case is there. If we are not utilizing 365, we'd need to be clear how the public can participate and that we're offering the hybrid or the, you know, teleconferencing just as a courtesy, and we can't guarantee that there won't be a service disruption.
Any?
Oh, well, I'm just gonna wait for Councilmember Candell, but I'll my other question. You you mentioned, and it's obvious that having a hybrid meeting is more complicated than an in-person meeting. But how much more complicated is the hybrid meeting than what we're doing now, Zoom meeting?
It's definitely more complicated for staff to have to manage both technology that's happening in the room as well as the streaming and having anyone participating that's speaking, you know, kind of having multiple ways to to come in and be heard and seen and understood. So a hybrid meeting is more complex than either an in-person only meeting or an online only meeting. There definitely is technology that can help us do it, but it will it'll take more time on staff and for the purposes of a council meeting and a planning commission meeting, an additional staff person for the duration of that meeting.
Okay, now, I assume it's correct that right now, if Xfinity went out in northern Lafayette, this meeting would be over because we wouldn't have a quorum, correct?
Well, I see Mala moving forward.
Well, I'm just, I'm gonna get to, I I want to focus on just the aspect of do we have to call off the meeting? Because it's been said that using in the staff report, that using a hybrid approach, if it breaks down, we have to end the meeting. I'll just posit that that's true now anyway. So how much more likely is it that the technology, not the staff support, but the technology would fail us if we were to develop the hybrid meetings? If we if we were to opt into 361, where then we're we're not offering it as a courtesy? And so if we lose the ability to do it, we have to stop the meeting?
I don't think it would be any more risk to have a hybrid meeting than to have these online meetings now. The hybrid meeting, the the Zoom call and the streaming would be originating from the library. So if the library had a internet or power disruption, that would impact our ability to have the online component of that meeting. But I I don't think there's necessarily any more risk compared to a wholly online meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, thank you. Wonderful report. The my question is, if we like, if we have a meeting and we've got a really hot topic and we're expecting a big crowd, is it possible for us, and and if they're so, you know, if we're thinking we're still going to try to social distance, can we opt to have some meetings fully online and some meetings hybrid? Or do we have to choose and go, we're gonna do mall hybrid? Or can we go, you know, like the mayor and the city manager can go, ah, we better hold this one online because we're not gonna be able to fit everybody in the room and provide and do it safely?
And that's a really great question. I'll let Mala chime in if she wants to. But my understanding is that we would have the opportunity to choose. We'll just have to be very mindful if if there's kind of alternating or some bodies approach it one way and some do it another, to be extremely clear to the public so they understand the expectations of the meetings. So there might be, you know, a perception issue in that, but I think that the the law as written like would allow you to.
And if I might just jump in, you're, as you've seen on our agendas, every 30 days, we're required to adopt a resolution making certain findings. So there may be an issue if we have a gap, if we stopped adopting that resolution. If we kept adopting it but chose to meet in person but kind of gave ourselves the flexibility, then that would be a way to do it and say, well, we we're not able to accommodate everyone physically in one room and have the social distancing of six feet, so we'd like to have this meeting held via Zoom.
Hey, great question. Councilmember Quoc? Is is there a forecast of when the governor's emergency order might terminate? Because that's, isn't that the only thing that permits us to keep going online and opting every month to to meet by Zoom? It's because there's emergency order, right? But in the absence of that, then we're all going back, then we would have to go back, right?
AB 361 is worded a little interestingly. There's parts of it that reference requiring a state of emergency, which is set to expire at the end of March, but I I believe is going to be extended by the governor. However, in other parts of it, there's not a requirement for a state of emergency, just a requirement for a finding of local or state officials recommending social distancing. So in theory, even though I don't think the state of emergency is going to lapse, if it did lapse and we still had the county recommending social distancing, we could still utilize AB 361.
Or could we as a city, if if the county did not determine there is a health risk, but we as a city determine that, is are we a jurisdiction that could decide that ourselves?
We are. I just, you know, we're not health officials, so I think it would be helpful to have something to really rely on if if we had some facts or supporting information about maybe the statistics in our community or something like that. It would be helpful to have that kind of background. So yes, it's not specific to the county health officer. It just says state or local officials, so technically it could be our determination. I just think because we we don't have our own health department, unlike the city of Berkeley, might be helpful to to have some supporting information.
Okay. So in the case that the that it did expire in March 31st, then in order to stay remote and online, we would need to rely on AB 361, right? And and then continue continue under that rule ruling for as long as we had something to rely on. And then in the absence, if the county changed, you know, became more relaxed and we we could potentially have nothing to rely on, and then we would back to the original situation. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So I did have just one minor question. You may have mentioned it, but did we look at the community center and in terms of their ability? I know it was that something as part of the other smaller rooms?
So certainly have have been up to the community center and and the rooms where they are currently holding some of their advisory body meetings are larger than, say, Conference Room 265 or the conference room at the police station. So certainly, we do have, I think, some flexibility in the rooms. Obviously, the availability of the room in the evening and other uses, you know, may come into play if things get shifted around.
And I know you had mentioned potentially moving something out to the Jennifer Russell room or building somewhere in the report, but, okay. So any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, so Suzanne, will you take a break from your presenting role and help with bringing in public speakers?
Sure. If any members of the public would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. The first speaker is Cheryl M.
Welcome.
Hi, I just had a couple of questions. One, you talked about the community center and you talked about where is circulation and design meet and the city council, when we're 265 and 240 mentioned in this, and if so, would the meetings that take place there, such as Banner Meeting and the other ones that meet there, are they part of this or would they still be on Zoom? I didn't really catch whether 240 and 265 were part of the conversation. And I just wanted to put my personal preference in that. Actually, I'm asking for another clarification from this discussion. If the health people say that we can go back in person, does that mean that we can no longer do the hybrid system work in the city of Lafayette? Put a case that because attendance is up and we want, we want people to attend, that they can continue with hybrids and not use the health reason? I guess that's a question. And then just showing my support that any and all meetings be hybrid. I enjoy being able to participate and get to the meetings this way, including all the little meetings, which were harder to get to that are in like 240 and 265. So those are my thoughts and my questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and we will answer questions after we finish public comment.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
The next public comment is from Carol Singer. And if anyone else would like to come on this item, please use the raise hand feature now, as there are currently no other hands raised.
Oh, good evening, city.
Welcome.
I'm on the Park and Rec Commission, so I I have a question about our meeting, since we are not one of the big four. Can we decide, how do we decide what kind of meetings we want to have? Who decides that or what are the, what would be our guidelines? My question.
Okay, do you have any other questions or?
No, but the commission and our subcommittee meeting.
Yeah.
You know, our whole meeting, a system, who decides, who decides what we can do?
Okay, we will answer that after our public comment ends as well. Are there any clarifying questions or questions for the speaker? I forgot to ask that last time. Councilmember Candell?
So do you know what the preference would be from your commission or committee, or you would take that back and figure out what they want?
Well, I haven't talked to the commission about it, so I'm not sure what they would like to do. Maybe we could have the commission and public and the subcommittees a virtual.
Got it. Thank you.
I'd like that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Carol, for coming and for all that you do as well, so.
Thank you.
Any other hands raised?
No, there are currently no other hands raised.
Okay, so I will bring this back and speaking of network failures, no, here it came back. We'll bring this back and as we move forward, if we could answer Cheryl's question. Excuse me, first, I could answer, or Suzanne, if you want to, but that the smaller meetings, 265 and 240 are definitely part of this and the other commissions and how to move forward with the advisory groups is part of the discussions, and we did take your and oh, she had the question about if the county health stops the social distancing and their requirements, can we stay hybrid? And do you want to speak to that, Suzanne or Mala? I don't want to mess it up.
Yeah, of course. So yes, Mayor, you're correct. In the staff report, the smaller meeting rooms was meant to be inclusive of 265, 240, the conference room at the police station, the meeting rooms at the community center. They were just not the not staff's first focus for coming up with a hybrid meeting solution. So all of those other meeting rooms are kind of considered the smaller meeting rooms in terms of the staff report. In terms of when there is no longer a health reason to be offering online or hybrid meetings, the city council could still choose to offer a hybrid option for the public to participate. However, once those kind of health situations are resolved, which will be a wonderful thing, we will be following the full Brown Act in terms of how the public can participate and have rights to participate in the meeting. So right now, what that means under the Brown Act is if a council member was teleconferencing into the meeting, they need to be doing that from a location that is accessible to the public and is listed in the agenda. So the pending legislation that I mentioned in the staff report actually may, if that gets approved, address that and make a change to the Brown Act, because right now, if you were to be at an out-of-town conference, staff would need to have the agenda posted at the hotel where you were staying, and and the public needs to be able to attend in the same location where a council meeting or council member is participating from, so that room needs to be open to the public, the door can't be locked, it also needs to meet ADA requirements and and other things.
Great, thank you. And then I think these might be one of the things we're going to discuss, but Carol's question about can the, can they decide, can, so Parks and Rec specifically is what she asked about and with the subcommittees, but it would apply to all commissions and all advisory groups, so I don't know if that's part of the discussion. I don't know if Suzanne, you want to cover that or?
Certainly, as part of the discussion, I would like to hear from council these different kind of decisions, when to go back to in-person and and how to handle those meetings. Would they apply to all of the advisory bodies or some of them, and we'd love that direction from you?
Okay. So I, Councilmember Candell, I was gonna just start about a process to go through each one, but.
Perfect, just real quick. It it sounds like you did not include allowing the rooms at the community center to be hybrid.
They just weren't in the first tier, so the the request for funds to be appropriated were specifically for the rooms of the big four meeting. So staff has thought about having hybrid meetings there, and we actually have procured two basically really basic video conferencing systems that could be used, but our attention hasn't been focused there because it would be a less robust solution.
Just making sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think for the purposes of being able to see each other, rather than having the slide come back up, although now as I'm saying it, it might be easier to see all of the questions, but the first question, the big category, was should the city continue to meet online while it is recommended by the county and or state? And does that cover that one, Suzanne? And then there are other subsets, so question on the table, thoughts?
I would follow our county guidelines. I think our county has been superb, along with our Bay Area, in terms of dealing with this crisis.
And go ahead, Vice Mayor Andori.
Yeah, I would say yes, but I would still want the ability to consider on a local level, even if the county changes its guidance.
And the county, my understanding is that, and at the top of the document that was in our packet, it says recommendations for going back and to into the meetings, and it does say that that so less strict guidelines, I mean, it's that the public agencies can make their decisions to do that. So I mean, I'm comfortable following the recommendation. So I mean, I'm comfortable following the recommendations and as long as the guidelines are, are there and we do still have the emergency executive order that's in place. I will say that the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors is going back in person on March twenty-ninth. And so I just, the reason I make that point is it's their, their recommendations less than orders or guidelines. So just to, to distinguish between that and I think we all understand that. So, Councilmember Quoc?
Oh, I had a, a question in general for those who've served a long time and also for the staff, but in, in asking the question, should we go back sooner or later in person? I've only been remote, so I don't really know, but I would ask, what's the benefit of being in person? What are we missing as a council, as staff, as a community by being online? Is there some aspect of the way we've, the city council's been meeting and all of our commissions have been meeting where we're just really missing some key thing that we are therefore in a hurry to get back at the earliest possible time to be back in person. Because my sense is that there's so much benefit to doing things online in terms of convenience for the public. Convenience for people who want to speak on item number ten and then they have to wait and come in. And how long and they're waiting until midnight at the library. I think there's the, the online experiment has been really good for democracy and civic engagement and you know, while hybrid can also be part of that solution, we, there are risks and increased of costs and staffing required to go into the hybrid mode. So I just wanted before, I just want to ask this basic, very basic question like what was, what are we missing from, and that would really drive us to get back to in-person meetings sooner? Because otherwise my feeling would be to go back as late as possible, like just keep doing this for as long as possible. And even maybe petition Sacramento to abandon the idea of going back in person if this is better for, for our communities. So anyways, just an open, I would love to hear fellow council members and staff ideas on what we're missing from the public sessions.
Vice Mayor Endury?
Well, I'm with Councilmember Quoc in his statement that we should continue doing this as long as we can because I think in the current circumstance, it, it, it does promote public safety, not to have in-person gatherings. Now, in terms of the pluses and minuses, the big plus is that doing it this way really makes it easier for me, more people to conveniently participate. And I don't think that although you'd have to hear from the people who are providing the input, I don't think that participating online takes away at all from the effectiveness of the input. And I think we're, we're probably getting more input doing it this way. The one factor, and it's an intangible one, and why I wouldn't want to permanently go to a Zoom meeting is you do have the feeling of community, the whole sense of the community gathering and discussing issues. The other, the, in terms of what you get when you meet in, in, in public, you do get that sense of community, but in terms of what is communicated among the public and to the council, the only thing that I can see that's really different now from the way it was before is the, let's call it the outbursts of support through applause for speakers or the boos for speakers. You know, which we could just, I, I'm finding this very pleasant not having to deal with that at all through this format, but you, you did get a lot of that. And you got, you got some positive interaction among people there and you have some negative interaction among people at the meeting and yeah, so I, I'm, I think we have to go back to public meetings. I think that's just that we are a public body. We need to be with the public eventually, but I'm with you, Councilmember Quoc, in wanting to hold off on that and as long as possible.
So Councilmember Dawson, did you have that thought? Oh. Go ahead Gina.
Oh, I would just agree with what I think are the benefits is I think there's an added public benefit of participation from a more diverse group of people, frankly, you know. So I think that's an important thing that, that we, we would invite and obviously that would be accommodated by the hybrid version, but as Councilmember Quoc said, I think there's that additional cost and staff time particularly is interesting. So if we were going to do it, I would probably definitely look at body by body, the way to do that and how to support that being done because I can't see the planning staff, you know, having to do all that technical work at the same time as they're really being in that meeting. So, so there's definitely things we're going to need to figure out on that as far as staff support for the technical aspect. And, and frankly, I'm with Councilmember Quoc. I've been just virtual this whole past year and a half. And I, I think it's interesting. For me, it's, it's, I have a certain way of working. I have a couple of computers open. I have all my resources here. So it'll be interesting when we do go back. There'll be, there'll be a different transition, but you know, it'll be good either way. As long as we can meet, this is truly face to face. Interestingly, I don't think on the dais, it's going to be this direct that I will be able to see all of you, which I think is interesting too in terms of just how, how I view everyone equally here. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Candell?
I miss the occasional cake. The celebrations I, I do miss because they, we do have those and they're important at times. And, and those are a community gathering piece of those meetings that people enjoy and I enjoy. So I do miss that, but I, but otherwise, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm big on the Zoom. I, I, I think it's a plus. And we should keep it for as long as we are able.
So I think we have, you have the answer to your question Suzanne, that we do want to keep it as long as I still think that it's within the, as long as we can within the executive orders, the legislative attempts at Brown Act public meeting reform in terms of some of the where you report and i- if the council member, you know, I have, when I was on the school board, actually had an agenda with my hotel room number on it because I had to do a meeting from there and no one came to the room, but you know, still had to do that. But I know that there are a couple of bills that folks have been, besides the one that's currently going through, but that people want to look at. It'll be an interesting discussion when we at the local level make a finding that we want to continue doing it. I think that'll be a different. I think, I think being back in person when the time is right is important. And I think for all the reasons, the celebrations, the having the sense of community, but also support the hybrid when we do go back in, in person, but do support the rest of the council on staying online until it's really safe and we know that, that the numbers are in the right direction. I did check today and in the county, they're down trending down and continuing and like twenty-eight percent or something in the hospitalizations and twenty-five or thirty over the last seven day period and that trend has been continuing. So hopefully that will keep happening. So I think we want to, we want to stay here looking at each other in our Brady Bunch boxes for now, so. And the next question, once in-person meetings resume and when hybrid meetings are held, should the city offer teleconferencing as a courtesy option for the public or rely on AB three sixty-one? And the, just as background, the county is going to continue move, operating under AB three sixty-one because of the, I re-listened to the meeting and the sense was that and Mala may have input on this, but that it does give us that flexibility, I believe, when we move forward for us to make our own local, at the local level findings, whereas if we stop doing it, as Mala mentioned a moment ago, it's like we're moving forward with being back in person. So I believe that Walnut Creek, in a little bit of the research, Walnut Creek does not rely on, oh no, it was in the report today in the staff report that we had, doesn't rely on AB three sixty-one so that they don't have to continue their meetings in the middle of important decisions. If there's a technical stoppage, you know, which we had experienced and had to table. So I'm supportive of staying with AB three sixty-one as long as that option is available when we go back into hybrid meetings. Vice Mayor Endury?
And just to confirm, the other plus with doing that is that a council member or commissioner can participate by Zoom from out of the county.
Right.
Okay, I'll support that.
Yeah, and sorry, I jumped in. Usually I say, oh, does anybody else have, but?
There's a lot of questions, so please do lead us through this and guide.
I see some nodding of head. Councilmember Quoc?
Yeah, I would support sticking with three sixty-one because there, there, we've had a one incident where halfway through the meeting, we had to continue. We recovered and did it the very next day. So I think if the, the, the business of the city can be gone the next day or so or the whatever, I think we just did it quickly. It's not like we have something so, so urgent that we, we cannot continue it to a special meeting. So I, I, I think the convenience outweighs any of the disadvantages there.
Okay, so Suzanne, that's our guidance there. And then the next part of that question, I think, are there other factors the city council wants to consider in determining when to return to in-person meetings? Did I get these out of order? No, okay. Such as required or recommended social distancing, face coverings, contact tracing, et cetera. And there was in a report and on the PowerPoint, there were a number of, of things there that really relate to the protocols that are in place, I think, now. Councilmember Candell?
And I would recommend that we, we shouldn't go back until masks aren't required and social distancing isn't required. I think it's just going to be hard to enforce. And no contact tracing, sorry.
Yeah. Anyone else have comments? Councilmember Dawson and then Councilmember Quoc?
I was just wondering with the Board of Supervisors going back with the county, I guess they are obviously adhering to their own recommendations, so. They aren't requiring, are they requiring the masking then? They're just going to go thoroughly through that? They're, they're not.
They're not requiring the masking.
So you know, to, to Councilmember Candell's question, it's just like, it's this interesting place, right? Where it's kind of up to the participants. So I, I mean, just in thinking what we want to see as a body in terms of our minimum safety, I guess, requirements. That's what we're discussing now. Okay. Yeah, I just want to comment, the first meeting at the Don Tatsen Hall just last week, the diversity and meeting was, it was interesting going in there for the first time and half the people had masks, half the people didn't. It, it just seemed I, I would like to enforce some certain amount of protocols if we go back sooner than that. There's actually a, like, there's no mask necessary at all kind of thing. I think we need to set a, a minimum is, is what I'd like to do.
And Councilmember Quoc, you had your?
Yes, I wanted to thank Suzanne for being, doing such a thorough job in the staff report to ask so many questions and details just to think through this for us of, you know, social distancing, masking, vaccination, checking or not. Should there be a sign-in list so that we can contact you afterwards, right? I mean, it almost goes on and on and on. For all of them are good questions and I, I struggled to think, oh, in tonight's meeting, could I even knowledgeably debate what is the right thing to do on each of those elements? And I, I don't really think I can. And so I think to the point where Council, Councilmember Candell said, we should just sort of wait until it's unall-clear by the, the county or whoever we're, we're above some other guidance that we're following, rather than we try to parse each one of those. I also think if we take the stance that we're gonna meet online for as long as possible, that we may be able to learn from other jurisdictions who have gone back earlier, can see how they're doing things and sort of how, just, I mean, this question, three months from now, six from, and nine months from now will all be sort of different than the way we ask the question. So I would just say not, that we not burn up too much time now to tackle these difficult things, but just if we've already decided to delay, then let's defer and learn from others.
Vice Mayor Endury?
Yeah, I agree. All the questions that relate to protocols, let's defer that because I think we're all in agreement. With respect to Councilmember Candell's statement about waiting until we can go back, I would say with that, at least I interpret that is we don't go back until COVID is truly endemic. And COVID is not endemic now. You know, we're losing over a thousand people a day. That's over four hundred thousand per year. I'm shocked actually at the loosening of standards. I was surprised when I showed up Thursday for the DEIB meeting at the library because that had been promoted as there, there would be protocols that you'd need to show that you had the vaccination and a mask would be required regardless of vaccination. That was in all the handouts and all the materials for that meeting. So I was surprised that that had been changed. So well, if, if we're agreed that we're going to wait till COVID becomes endemic before we meet, that's, I'm fine with that. Then we don't have to think about these protocols.
So, so Suzanne, so that was just, are there other factors that we want to look at? And so waiting until it's endemic. The next questions also have to relate with when we go back in person. Do we want to have the same factors for the big four and the other, other advisory bodies? And I think the answer is yes for now because we're saying we're not going back in person. I guess Suzanne, my question. And then question three is about the safety protocols and so specifically which we had transitioned to. So I guess my question for you is, is it helpful for us to continue and weigh in on those? You're hearing that we think we want to wait until we're closer and until there are changes and there isn't a need for the protocols. It's, if I'm interpreting that correctly. So just kind of throwing it back to you, do you have enough information from what you were looking for this evening for us to go forward until we go back in person?
Certainly, if, if the council wants to delay discussing if we should develop any safety protocols for in-person meetings until we're closer to that time, that's certainly something that, that we can do and, and those that list of kind of prompts might change based on what the county at, at that time is recommending or suggesting, suggesting. So I really just think maybe focusing on question one and two. So question one, sounds like there was consensus that the city council didn't want to return to doing any public meetings in person until there were no more social distancing recommendations or requirements or other, you know, health orders recommending against indoor gatherings such as our meetings would be. So I think that addresses number one. And then number two, just clarifying, again, the council has given that feedback that, that right for now you would be including all of the advisory bodies as well as the city council and the other big four at this time.
Councilmember Quoc?
And Suzanne, did you need any guidance from us as far as the build out of the technology in the Don Tatsin Community Hall? Or the second one, or I mean, my thought is that you, you should continue to build it out and be ready for hybrid meetings. As, you know, don't slow that down, even if we are delaying six or nine, well, however many months it's going to be. Your, your green light, you're, you're still proceeding on that, right?
Unless council were to tell us to stop, we are currently still proceeding with getting that built out and, and doing the testing and, and making sure staff is comfortable with that. Because as discussed this evening, in the future, when there's no longer a, a health order or a health kind of when there's no longer a, a health order or a health kind of requirements, you may want to have the public be able to participate remotely and we'll have that technology available then. So unless you were to tell me to stop, uh, we would be proceeding.
No, I think that that's just, uh, just to clarify that we're not having you slow down on that. And I noticed the budget numbers, so appreciate, we appreciate the continued keeping us abreast of where you're standing on the budgets and, and so forth. I, I did have one other question, Karen, and that relates to the comment Carol Singer asked earlier about whether her commission, Parks and Rec or all of them, can they themselves decide? You know, even if we at some point go back in person, could they decide to continue to meet remotely? Or will they need to follow what the city council does in terms of our, our lead and, and go back in person regardless, even if they preferred to stay on Zoom? Yeah, I got an effect, a legal question or, or a policy question.
It's probably both. Councilmember Quack, I can answer the legal aspect of it. The way AB three six one is worded is each body, and I think Suzanne mentioned that earlier, each body can make the findings for itself. We, as the city, have had the council make the findings on behalf of all of the commissions just for ease, so that there weren't so many resolutions floating out there every thirty days. So the council, just as you did tonight on consent, has adopted the findings for all of its legislative bodies. But in theory, if the council wanted to go back earlier, let's say the council wanted to go back next month. I know that's not what was discussed, but other commissions wanted to stay on Zoom and utilize AB three six one, they could adopt their own resolutions.
Okay, well, I certainly favor giving them flexibility. Just, I don't know if that's an agenda item, but I
Yeah.
I think for discussion purposes.
Well, I'm going to look to Mala because I don't, is that part of what we could discuss tonight?
Um, I'll need double check exactly how we worded it. Hold on one second.
Well, it was the big four. If, if we decided to go to hybrid meetings or in-person, I should go back and, and look at it too. But, um, I'm gonna.
A question two says, are the factors the same for the big four and other advisory bodies in return to in-person meetings?
I think that you could talk about it.
Okay, so I, um, okay, I, I was going to jump in and not do my normal, but Councilmember Dawson, go ahead.
Are you just gonna add though, um, because this doesn't pack staff? So I would want to treat staff similarly across the meetings. You know, not to take away that decision from the groups because that's really important, what their input is. But that would then create a, a different kind of set of policy for staff at, at those types of meetings, I would think.
And aren't they all, I guess, Mala, this is my question for you. The council sets the commissions, I mean, they were set by council policy action. And so having them all, and this is, I'm just questioning this out loud, having all of the commissions do something different and develop their own resolutions seems not the way that our system is set up. And that we can, as a council, we can decide that we want to let them, let everybody do their own resolutions. But I think that what I heard was that we would have input from the various commissions. And if there was a good case for Parks and Rec or one of the other commissions going back, doing, not doing hard hybrid. But I would think that all bodies would wait until the council was back in person, but I'm just, it's just for discussion and debate. But the idea that every council, every commission advisory body would be doing their own resolutions and choosing their own time and going back before the council did, wasn't something that I, I guess I came into the meeting thinking was, was efficient. Vice Mayor Andrey?
And I'll, I'll agree with that. I think it should be set by the council.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree for, I agree as well.
Um, but appreciate the questioning and, and looking at how we do that. So are there other questions before we? And there's no, um, this, there's no, um, excuse me, no vote on this tonight. We were providing direction. I suppose we should have left it as an action item if we were going to say we're going back right now, but we didn't do that. So any other comments from my colleagues or Suzanne, Vice Mayor Andrey?
Well, I say this with a smile, but several times in the last few minutes, we've referred to the big four. I think we're only, we're referring to the four bodies that meet at
At the library.
Library. Uh, I think Mayor, as a fellow liaison to the Park Trail and Recreation Commission.
Yeah.
That that's a big commission.
And the youth commission and the, no, so it is, it's the ones, thank you very much, because we don't want to, they're, they're all equally important. They just don't all meet in the, uh, library.
And that's the pandering for tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Say thanks again, Suzanne. That was a really thorough report. Appreciate it.
And then definitely confirming that we do want to move forward. And I think one of the things we also heard tonight very clearly from all council members was that when we do go back in person, we do want to have the hybrid meeting option to be able to continue the robust engagement from, you know, wherever residents are. I do know that there are some agencies, some in our community that they're only doing public comment in the meetings. But you heard clearly here tonight that we want to move forward with the hybrid. So thank you. Okay, and with that, with long notes here, okay, we will move on to, uh, item eight, agenda item eight, staff report. And I will turn it over to our city manager, Narup Sivatson.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. On March the fifth, you held, yes?
Oh, actually, I want to do, should I, oh, go ahead, Narup, you do yours, but then Mala, turn on your mic at the right time so that I don't forget, because I want to give Mala the opportunity to say a few words after you do your presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. On March the fifth, you held a special workshop to discuss and develop priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. Currently, you have three priorities, principal priorities. There are a whole other range of tasks that are underway besides the three of them. But you identified public safety and mobility as a priority. You identified wildfire prevention and utility safety and created vibrant downtown and support the business community. On March the fifth, the council, I discussed various issues and priorities before then and came up with four that all of you believed were important to promote, to promulgate in the coming year. And one of them, wildfire prevention and preparedness and utility safety is a carryover from the current year. The second one, again, a carryover from the current year is improved pedestrians and traffic safety and multi, multi-modal mobility. It's worded differently, but it's really the, uh, the essence of the priority that you currently have. Then the council, uh, in looking at create a vibrant downtown and support the business community, realized that a lot of effort was spent in the last year helping businesses through the Business Assistance Program and through ARPA. And that, the majority of that work had been done. And so you, you tabled or parked it for a minute and then also had a, a long discussion about community needs and the need for the, for the city as a whole to develop a fiscal sustainability plan, which would pay for all the services that our community wants and desires, not only in the short term, but in the long term. Going back to the downtown priority, the council had a quite a robust discussion on the urgency and the need to address the accommodation of numerous hundreds of housing units planned in the downtown during this housing element update and maybe in future updates. And recognizing that there was a need to develop a strong implementation plan with strategies that could be implemented immediately rather than waiting for a plan to be developed. You discussed creating a downtown and Mount Diablo corridor specific plan or to be, um, a plan that would look at the boundaries of the current downtown specific plan and also Mount Diablo as a major arterial that served the downtown to see, um, to see how we could prepare for this growth that's coming in, how to be more proactive, how to make sure that while we are accommodating the housing, that we also ensure that there is a balance of jobs and housing, that we provide the commerce that we need in our community, that we create a plan that reflects our current focus on sustainability and also a focus on improving all forms of mobility, not only vehicular, but car, but pedestrians and bikes as well. Out of that discussion, you created this priority. And at that point, staff informed you that the general plan is currently underway. You're, we're, the G-PAC is almost done with the housing element, which will then come to the planning commission and you, that we could not undertake too large forward-looking plans at the same time. And so the council directed staff to come back today so that you could review your priorities and confirm them. That is our recommendation. But also you asked us to start to flesh out this idea of pivoting away from the general plan to a more focused downtown specific plan. And so I'm going to turn, uh, first I'm going to turn over, uh, my presentation to Mala and then to Greg Wolfe, who's prepared a memo, which gives you an idea of how one might do that. I just want to let you know that staff does believe that it is time to, uh, look at the downtown in greater detail, to be more proactive and reactive to development and to implement some of your new policies and measures that you have, you have identified as important to the community, such as pet by mobility and such as sustainability. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mala.
Thank you.
Thank you, Narup. I just wanted to update the council. As you might recall, at one of our previous meetings, Councilmember Quack recused himself from discussions related to the BART property out of an abundance of caution. He sought an FPPC opinion letter. The FPPC did respond with a written advice letter and found that he did not have a conflict of interest related to his property. So he will be able to participate as it relates to rezoning the BART parcel. But because tonight there is a discussion about maybe including the BART property as part of the down, as part of this specific plan, uh, we wanted to update the council and update the public. And I will pass it now to Greg.
Great, thank you. And, and as we're bringing Greg in, thank you, Councilmember Quack and Mala and everyone who were involved in asking the questions and, and getting the opinion or the advice. So thank you. There we go.
Good evening.
Welcome.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can, and we can see you.
Uh, thanks very much. So, uh, as part of your goal-setting workshop on the fifth, as the city manager noted, uh, goal number three or priority number three was added or recrafted from the, the carryover goals from last year and notably potentially pivoting from the general plan update process to focus more on the downtown, which correctly was identified as the, the area within which the, the majority of the anticipated housing units would be constructed, uh, as are currently being discussed under the general plan, I'm sorry, the housing element update, which tomorrow night is the last scheduled meeting of the General Plan Advisory Committee. Uh, on the housing element update, there, there's an expectation that they will be making a recommendation to the planning commission. And then ultimately the council will be hearing it after the planning commission. So with that, um, there, there will be additional units and additional growth in the downtown. And it, it warrants planning to be able to accommodate those units through infrastructure, through services and an appropriate mix of land uses. So, um, we, following our submission to HCD in a, in a draft form of our housing element update, um, we will be, staff will be working on, uh, necessary updates to the lane use element and safety element as required by law to bring those elements into compliance and consistency with the, the housing element update. And so those will be, um, this summer and this fall. But the, there's a, you know, more comprehensive, um, thoughtfulness and planning for accommodating those units and new residents through a variety of land uses and goods and services in the downtown. And so the staff has, has reviewed the, the goal-setting workshop and is prepared to make this pivot if the, if the council in its deliberations, uh, determines that's what you'd like to do. Um, and limit the geography of the, the planning document. So instead of a general plan, which would be the entirety of the city, the focus would be on the downtown and the Mount Diablo corridor. And if deemed appropriate, the adding in the, the BART station parking lots as well. And so there's a, a diagram, uh, which notes as much in your staff report. As well, the, the, there was discussion around making, um, sort of Lafayette, being able to accommodate the new, new units and the new residents. But being, doing so in a aspirational way, a way that is sustainable, welcoming. And, you know, I think foremost, beyond housing, beyond land use, the, the next highest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions is transportation. And so how will those residents get around? Um, there was discussion throughout the day at the goal-setting about making our community or downtown a, a walkable city, a bikeable city. Um, and so certainly the circulation, uh, element, uh, aspect of the, the downtown needs to be scrutinized and rethought, um, in a lot of ways. And then, uh, lastly, we've heard, um, testimony tonight and previously and at your goal-setting about building community and inclusivity and community. Uh, as Ms. Herpik this evening noted, that, that parks and opportunities for the community to gather really do bolster and foster, uh, community. And so planning for those parks and, and certainly there has been a parks master plan and a downtown specific plan that envisioned parks in, in certain locations. And I think in a lot of ways, what the, the council, what we're hoping for, if the, if the pivot is made to a, a an unnamed document, but it could be a downtown specific plan two point O that's updated to reflect the greater degree of growth and identify some specific actionable outcomes and implementation plans on how we actually achieve those, those goals rather than just kind of plan for them. So I, I think that would be a recommendation from staff ultimately. And so we've, we've put, you know, touched on aspects of a, a downtown-focused plan and that I think the name remains to be conceived. And would recommend. downtown focused plan and that I think the name remains to be conceived and would recommend that if the council continues on its course, on its pivot from the general plan to perhaps meet with the liaisons, the city council liaisons for planning and kind of scope out such a plan, what, what the, the desired outcomes would be. And, you know, we, we are committed and, and very deeply involved in the housing element update and we have statutory deadlines to meet and we are short staffed and losing our primary planner on that. That said, we, we have to pick up the ball and continue that effort. It, it can't be put aside or, or put down. So with that, you know, that there, we are receiving applications, not for Sarah's position yet, but for planners to, to bring us up to full staff. But that, that will take some time. And so we're, we're happy to make the pivot and, and work with the liaisons in the near future to scope that out and then if appropriate, put out an RFP, et cetera, and, and bring you back more detailed information. But the staff work kind of lays out our, our thoughts to date.
Narup, you're on mute, but thank you, Greg.
We'll never learn.
We're going to be here for a while, so non-Zoom.
In the staff report on, on your priorities, we've identified what we heard were some of your desired outcomes and some of the outcomes were those, some goals set by your commissions, others were things that you would, would like to see achieved under each priority. I want to give you an idea of next steps. On the 25th of March, the management team is going to meet in an all day retreat and we are going to together look at your priority, your desired outcomes, our current workload, and with the help of a facilitator, start to develop work plans for each department. What we're trying to do is also incorporate the recommendations of the management partners report, which stress the need for metrics and stress, stress the need for work plans so that people, the community has an idea of the, the level of service that we offer. Once that's done, we will, as Greg mentioned, we'd like to meet at least a couple of times with the subcommittee of the council to flesh out this idea of a downtown plan and then return to you in early April, on April the 11th with more information. We had a week to, to kind of, yeah, put our heads together and come up with, with a, with a, with this report, but we'll have more information for you. And by that I mean a scope of, a draft scope of work for the downtown plan, possible timeline and a, a budget. And, but the timeline is impacted by the housing element. It's also impacted by the need to update the other two chapters of the general plan. So we're trying to put all that together and we will return to, to you on April the 11th. So today our recommendation is that you confirm your four priorities so that staff can begin working on their implementation.
Okay. And so thank you very much for the staff report and for capturing our, what I want to say was a great example of how councils work together and discuss and, and represent the community in developing priorities. And so thank you for catching that. Are there questions for staff before we open for public comment? Council member Dawson?
First off, thanks Greg for that report. You mentioned perhaps an RFP and it, it seems to me that we'll, while we're waiting to kind of staff up, would we need to contract out for staff is my first question. And then the RFP, would that be what I would, might assume might be urban planning, someone who could really bring that expertise, not that we don't have that on staff, but this whole vision to help us pull it together and how to facilitate. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes, and yes. And we, we are already using a contracting firm to, to backfill some planning positions. And we, we still have openings. There, there, there's insufficient supply out there to sufficiently backfill. You know, we, we've known for, for some time that we've had an additional FTE to backfill and then Jonathan Fox, Fox's position. And so yes, we, we're utilizing that and, and there's just a lack of supply of, of planners because there's a lot of activity and, and the other local communities in, well, certainly throughout the Bay Area, but even in Contra Costa have similar positions open and unfilled. So yes, we're, we're doing both.
Yeah. And, and we will, to answer your question number two, Greg and I have talked about an urban planning firm teaming up with a transportation planning firm that has, you know, expertise in sustainability, in pet bike mobility and safety. So the, the two together, working with Greg to develop this plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Council member Candell?
Yes, thank you. I, I thank you for, council member and jury for suggesting this during our meeting. Want to give that credit where credit is due. The, two questions. One, do we need to, like to ask the G-PAC if they can pivot or do we have to like rename it because it was the general plan advisory committee? I mean, like, what's the mechanics behind that group and how the pivot may happen?
That's a great question. Good question, council member Candell, and one that we don't have an answer to today. We still have to think that through. It's also a question of when does G-PAC stop working on its current task and when, and, and what, what was, what does a city need in terms of citizen involvement in a downtown specific plan? So we will work with the subcommittee and also bring back some suggestions to you on April the 11th.
Perfect. All right. And second, this is a more hypothetical situation. It, with our downtown, you know, and, and more the BART parking lots in particular, if we choose to, to do this planning process, do we get to plan as if our, what our community wants? Or do we have to align with the state laws and what they're telling us we have to, or that we have to do? Like, for example, in this, if BART plan, can we choose to really desire to plan three to four stories and replace parking and, you know, units of a size that we want, et cetera, et cetera? Or in this plan, do we have to follow AB 2923 and, and only choose that? That's a total hypothetical, right?
BART has indicated its absolute willingness and desire to work with the, the city if and when the BART parking lots are, are redeveloped. And so it has, has expressed that if the, the city adopts objective standards, land use guidelines and that their, their, their goal will be to comply with those to the degree that they don't violate or, or conflict with AB 2923. So what we have been told is that we need to be able to accommodate five stories, but that doesn't mean universally. So it could be three to five stories. So it could wedding cake. And I think we could plan and envision full parking replacement. So the commuters and system users and residents would, would both be fully parked out. Whether that could actually come to fruition in, in an ultimate project, I think would, you know, partly depend on the performer, of the cost of, of doing that. So if we can bring money to that, I think it would certainly affect it. But, but I think we can plan aspirationally, if you will, for what?
That's, that's my question.
We, as a community, would like to see within kind of the guardrails of 2923.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Smirian jury.
I'm going to ask a hypothetical question, Council member Candell's hypothetical. If we were to start the specific plan and if our specific plan were to call for what you just described, those elements, Greg, a full replacement parking for levels, larger units, how would that impact your discussions with HCD over that element when you're pointing out that the general plan calls for 825 units on the BART parking? And you don't have to answer that now. I'm just raising that as a hypothetical.
Yeah, I guess my initial reaction is I don't know that it would impact HCD's review of our housing element, but I can, I can give it more thought.
Okay. Well, I'm, okay.
Okay. And so, and Greg, you said within the guy, the guardrails, the guardrails of the law, and you mentioned AB 2923, but they would also have to be within all of the state laws, correct? Within the, okay. Not hypothetical, sorry. So are there other questions before we go to public comment? Okay. So Suzanne, now it's time for public comment and Suzanne will tell you how to do that and bring you over.
Thank you. The first speaker is Grace Dixon. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you. I did listen to all five hours and 15 minutes of the, of the whole setting. It was impressive. And I am very supportive of the four council priorities and the deliberation indeed was thoughtful and very well orchestrated and you all worked very well together. I do have some questions and I am very excited about the concentration on, I'll call it it downtown general plan or whatever your, what you'll officially call it. It's, it's just the right way to go, in my opinion. But I do have some questions on the timing because I was familiar with, you know, how the general plan was going to proceed in the years that it was going to take. So here are my questions. There has been discussion of, you know, a downtown overlay, if you will, or park fees regarding the Quimby Act. So how will that play into this new corridor vision? When will that happen? The parking ordinance, when will that be rewritten in this new corridor plan? Will vehicle miles traveled be used to then update, change the parking ordinance? Commercial zones and land use in commercial zones? Parks and parks with playgrounds are not listed as a use in commercial zones? Does that mean that they are an allowable use, a land use? And could we put that in the city code? And if so, when would that happen? And then finally, the noise ordinance, I, that was, I believe, going to happen in the general plan. Will it then happen in the, this new downtown corridor plan? Several reasons I, I would like to see the noise ordinance updated for parks and schools. So for instance, say Lafayette Elementary needs to expand because of the 1,000 ish, maybe 500, 750, who knows how many kids will come in with the new housing. And we want to expand the footprint of Lafayette Elementary. Well, could the neighbors of Lafayette Elementary complain using the noise ordinance? And so if so, when will that be resolved in this corridor plan so that parks and schools could be left out of, of the noise ordinance? That was it.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? And thank you for always with the perfect timing and, and for listening to our meetings. So are there any other, I don't see any questions for Grace. So are there any other speakers, Suzanne?
Yes, the next speaker is David Clark, followed by Cheryl M. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now.
We can hear you?
Yeah.
We can see you?
I have sort of two buckets of comments. That was buckets. I originally was going to make one comment, but they, and these are all going to be questions because I, I know that this is a comment period, but just hopefully you can restructure these questions into comments. But what impact, I like this plan, but what impact would this have on the existing downtown specific plan? For example, would it supplant it, augment it, put it on hold, not put it on hold? Same thing with respect to perhaps, in my opinion, more importantly, the downtown creeks plan. Sup, supplement, supplant, augment, put it on hold, for example. I think, I didn't see any mention of creeks in this, in the corridor plan that we're talking about now. And when you look at that map that's in the staff report, that is the downtown creeks plan. So I think creeks should be added. And with reference, for one example, to the 15 minute neighborhood bullet point, just think what, if we've got a network of creeks and trails, easements and pathways that you can walk faster from one end of the town to the other, using those, those creeks, the trails alongside the creeks than walking along a sidewalk and waiting for stoplights, for example. It's just, we could really be aspirational here with respect to that particular item. But I'm sure there are others. That's, that's kind of one, one group of questions. The other one I had Grace raised, I think Grace touched on this, in the December, actually it was November 9th meeting, the council had a fairly lengthy discussion about Nexus studies, impact fees, and whether we're going to fund those or expand them. And, and the council reached, made the, reached a conclusion of we're going to expand those fees. I don't know, and I've been trying to stay on top of those. I, I brought it up in the December meeting and told it was premature and that, you know, in the March meeting, it's getting closer and they should be in the budget in May. But have those been incorporated into this concept in, in terms of consideration of, and as Grace mentioned, an overlay district or a creek impact fee, or expanding the Nexus study, which needs to be updated anyway to include some of the things along the lines of pathways alongside the creeks? So I know that's appropriate of, of somewhat disparate comments, but that's what comes to mind just based on, on what I've seen so far. I, I like this approach. I think it's, I think it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No. And, and as noted, we will incorporate the questions in our deliberation and get those answered as much as we can this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Cheryl M. And there are currently no other hands raised after Cheryl. So if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature now.
Welcome, Cheryl. Think you should, yeah, there you go.
All right. Well, David Clark is a wise man. He, his first bucket list, I'm going to make this short, was my bucket list. It was my first set of questions. So you heard it. He did a great job of articulating that. So thank you, David. And then my other thoughts about this, I think it's an interesting thought and I did listen to some of your Saturday meeting, not as many as five hours, but I, and I don't think I've seen Narup's smile so big during this later discussion about this agenda item. So I think she's, it was really nice to see you guys all this kind of communicating well together and seeing Narup. and seeing Narup's smile beyond, biggest smile I've ever seen. My other concern, thought about this plan that I just kind of throw out there is, I talk about this infrequently, but is the service industry? So I think it's an interesting plan that we talk about this. Just, I think it's often overlooked is the thing that will always be there. But with all the housing coming in, the idea that we lose some of our service industry, which is car repairs, tires and things like that. And so I'm intrigued in trying to incorporate that is, so it's an interesting thought and an interesting idea. And then I don't know if Sarah is listening, but maybe not. But I would love to find out how we can say thank you to her somehow before she leaves. I've known her and met with her in 245 and room 260 for years, back in her heyday in the parking ordinance, so it'd be nice to have a public chance to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? And thank you, Cheryl, and thank you for the kind words about the meeting and about Sarah and for attending all of the meetings, even back when they were in person. I saw you at lots of meetings, so thank you. Are there any other speakers, Suzanne?
No, there are currently no other hands raised.
Okay, so we will bring it back for discussion. And Greg and Narup, I don't know if you want to touch on some of the impacts, if, I think some of them, it might be early, but some of them, I did take notes if you.
I did notes as well. I'm going to try and, Greg, please, please correct me. There are lots of good suggestions about the Quimby Act overlay and the impact fees and the creeks plan. Those are important. And as we develop the scope of this plan, we will flesh it out so that it incorporates many of these things and the noise ordinance. Having said that, I just want to say, we have to be, and my suggestion would be strategic in what we exactly want out of this plan, especially if we want it to be a plan that's done quickly. The more we add to the scope of work, the longer it might take. So the next, maybe the next round of discussions would be, what do we focus on, what's urgent that we need to handle by way of code amendments or design standards that will help us be be able to accommodate development in a manner in which the community wants and not something that's forced on us. So these are excellent points, but as we go through the council, we'll need to really take a fine, you know, a sharp pencil to narrow down the scope of the plan. That's our initial thought, because we can just make this plan very robust and very large and include everything, but that's going to take a very long time to do as well.
Thank you. I think that, thank you, Narup. So, so the prime, the main question before us is that we're being asked to approve the priorities that we set forth on, at our March 5th meeting. And so the wildfire prevention and preparedness and utility safety. Number two, improve pedestrian and traffic safety and multimodal mobility. And number three, create a downtown and Mount Diablo corridor specific plan. And number four, develop a fiscal sustainability plan for the short term and long term. And so I guess my question is, is there any discussion on those? Is someone, you know, ready to make a motion or, okay, Vice Mayor Andori?
Yeah, I'm prepared to move that those be adopted as our priorities in exactly the words that are in the document. But before I do, I guess the question is, will we then discuss the bullet points that are underneath? Give some guidance to staff before staff goes into its all-day meeting on the 25th?
So I, I mean, we're back to the same thing we were on the March 5th meeting. But, and we got a very long list, even though we weren't going to do that. We were going to let them come back. So I will defer to the, my council, my other council members, but I was thinking that we would, that staff would come back with those and we would discuss them at that time. But other council members may want to go through each of those items. I did think that after we, if and when we vote to approve these, that we would go back about next steps on the downtown specific plan to make sure that we're all in agreement on what staff had suggested about a council subcommittee and a timeline for coming back and how we do that process. Vice Mayor Andori?
I'll move that the council adopt the four priorities in the staff report as the priorities for the 2022-23 fiscal year.
Okay, and do we have a second? Council member Candell? And is there any other discussion on that before I go to the roll call vote? And so I will start with council member Candell. Hi. Council member Dawson?
Hi.
Council member Quoc?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Andori?
Hi.
And I'm an I, and so we have unanimously approved the priorities for the 2022-23 fiscal year and budget cycle. And so just before we move to have any other discussion or questions around the next steps, I did want to also, and thank you, council member Candell, for mentioning, council member Vice Mayor Andori suggesting this and bringing this forward. And I want to thank City Manager Savatza for that, working back and forth with us as council member Quoc called it, we're brainstorming. And we were visionary and looking at it strategically and came to, came to a really good, really good set of priorities. And we started to, you know, say to staff what some outcomes and actions that we, we as individual or council members would like to see on behalf of our community. And look forward to staff coming back. If somebody wants to offer some more tonight, we can do that. But also want to thank the staff in advance, because I know that we also, being visionary and forward-thinking also requires staff to do a lot of work. And as everybody, we want to point out, we pointed it out that day, every council member talked about wanting to make sure we can get our staffing filled so that we have the full team and can move forward with that work. And so that is also an underlying priority in all of this is supporting the management in getting staffing back up. So with that, what I heard Narup and Greg say is that on March 25th, they will have their department head meeting. They will look at these priorities. They will look at the outcomes that we began to brainstorm at the goal setting. We also remember there were a number of items still on those goals and outcomes and action plans that will carry over on at least two of the priorities from last year. And they'll be prepared to come back after that to April 11th. As it relates to the downtown, and we do need a name, the expanded, the downtown specific Mount Diablo corridor, including BART plan. We, Narup recommended, and we did speak today about having the Planning Commission Subcommittee or Liaisons, not Subcommittee Liaisons, work with staff to look at developing the scope, timeline and a budget. And in that, that would also include how that impacts the General Plan Advisory Committee and their work going forward beyond the housing element update. And so I think those are where I picked up things. If there are still questions or comments, I look forward to hearing from my colleagues. I see some nodding and some, so I think that we may have finished this item. And just as I said that day, my heart is full. I'm very excited about the work, you know, that we're going to be doing going forward. And thank you. Okay, so then we have no public hearings. We have no items removed from the consent calendar. So we'll move to council and commission reports. And so are there any council members who would like to report on activities or consideration of matters for placement on a future agenda? Okay, I will just note that I want to thank the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Committee with Liaisons, Councilmember Candell and Councilmember Quoc for the really very good presentation and conversation on last Thursday at the library. And it was, you know, there were a few brand-new people there. And so that was really good as well. And a lot of ideas about ways that we can, as a city, working with the chamber and individually in our neighborhoods, be more welcoming. And I just thought that it was very good. And I met a couple of new people who want to get involved and want to help with those activities as well as I think other council members did as well. We do have the Tri-City meeting coming up with our colleagues. From, and it will be hosted by Arinda. So I'm looking forward to seeing that agenda as well when that comes forward. It is going to primarily focus on the update of the La Marinda Action Plan. So we will have a joint presentation on that topic. And I think those were the only things that I had to bring forward today. So I see no hands being raised. So I will now go on to the City Managers, Vice Mayor Andori and Councilmember Quoc. I knew if I kept.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Andori.
Well, thank you to the City Manager and to city staff for moving quickly.
Oh, yeah.
Barring the Ukrainian flag. Like, I'm just wondering, is this the first time that a flag of another country has flown from that flag, Seth?
I don't know, Vice Mayor. I really don't know.
It really looks good.
No, they worked very hard and we had back, I wanted just, I meant to add that, I had it in my notes. But we also had a resident who, his flag came in first. He was willing to work with us to let us borrow that one and tell. And as it worked out, it, they just all came in. So thank you to everybody who had a part in that and you, Vice Mayor Andori, for, you know, bringing it forward. The, I love the sunflowers that are also there at the base of the flag and very, very moving, as we said, symbolic gesture, but very important. So, and Councilmember Quoc?
Oh, I just want to give an update from the Environmental Task Force, which met a few days ago too, and they very excitingly passed a recommendation that the city look into an ordinance for EV charging for all in multifamily new construction. And that was something that the ETF had been working on for about nine months. And just to try, because the current California laws, can you imagine if new construction, what percentage by state law needs to have an EV charger? It's zero, no parking spaces. Now Lafayette requires 5%, which is better, but it's still considering that we'll be building many new constructions. It is imperative and also just for renters to be able to charge their EVs. And that's not something that's allowed now. So they've passed a recommendation, which will go to staff and eventually the Planning Commission, and then eventually the City Council to try to allow that all residents who live in multifamily units, just like single-family units, we can charge in their homes, that multifamily residents should also be able to charge in their apartments and condos as well. So that was exciting to see them pass that this week after many months of work. So I appreciate all the tremendous amount of work that they and the staff have put into that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Dawson.
Just a quick note that last, it was last weekend, Mayor Geringer was at the Lafayette Hillside Memorial to, we had a, the organization had a little vigil for Ukraine, and it was a nice turnout. Community had a chance to remember and kind of honor what is happening over there. And we have two, in fact, our reporter from La Marinda Weekly is from Ukraine. And she shared, you know, the concern she had and her gratitude to have a place where people can come together, as well as Mayor Geringer, your words, that were expressed on behalf of the city. So just wanted to mention that. And I also want to just give a shout out to Tracy Robinson. I should have done this at this previously, but so instrumental and so wonderful at being so central to all the subcommittee, ARPA Subcommittee discussions, facilitating between, you know, Mala and of course with Thomas and HDL. So thank you, Tracy, for all your work and the questions and information you gather for us as we meet. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Candell, last chance. Okay, so we'll move on to the City Managers' update.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give credit where it's due. Suzanne's idea, it was Suzanne's idea to buy the sunflowers and wrap them around the pole. So it was just an extra special touch.
Yeah.
A reminder that next Friday, the Lafayette Chamber is holding the Joint Citizens of the Year Dinner to honor Bill Fraser and Janet Thomas. And we're actually privileged because Janet is watching us right now. Just wanted to give a little shout out.
Great, thank you. And as a point of personal privilege on that comment, also very involved in almost everything that we talked about tonight during our council member updates, our Citizen of the Year, Janet Thomas. So just as another comment. So moving on to Agenda Item 12, written communications. We have a letter from Jay Lifson, the Executive Director of the Lafayette Chamber, requesting permission to use Lafayette Plaza for Lafayette Rotary Club's annual candy scramble on Saturday, April 16th, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., including no parking on Plaza Way and a portion of Golden Gateway. And so everybody I know had the opportunity to read the letter. Do I have questions or a motion?
I'm moved that we adopt Resolution 2217.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
And then before we vote, I'm going to go to public comment. I sort of caught it and then I saw a light went on in my head or a mic turned off. So Suzanne, may we ask for public comment?
Certainly. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will do the, conduct the roll call vote. Councilmember Candell?
Hi.
Councilmember Dawson?
Hi.
Councilmember Quoc?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Andori?
Hi.
And I am an I, so it is unanimous. And another thing that happens on almost every meeting is these, the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary and all the events that are happening in the community. So an exciting way to end the meeting. And so unless there are no other, there's no other business before the body, I will adjourn the meeting until our next meeting. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.